Is being recorded.
Are we still being recorded?
Yes.
Being recorded.
Now, we're good to go again.
All right, well. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. It is Tuesday, April twenty-sixth at seven oh five P. M., and I now call to order the two thousand ninety-six regular meeting of the City of College Placity Council. And will the clerk please take your call?
Yes, Councilmember Jessup.
Present.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Espinosa.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Sherman hasn't. And Councilmember Boyle has requested to be excused. We also have Mayor Hernandez, City Administrator Mizatello, City Attorney Colwell, by instructor Brian Carlton, Deputy Finance Director Daeshree Schmick, Police Lieutenant Benfield, Community Development Director John Ricker, H. R. Manager Sean Doring, and myself, City Clerk Smixel.
All right.
Would it be possible for us to see them rather than that screen? Because we have that. Maybe next.
If they put their hand, you're gonna have to.
I can try.
Yeah, because we can't see if anybody wants to say something.
I'll have to figure out something for next time because if I do that, then the anybody watching via the YouTube would only be seeing the council people.
On the screen?
Because that is what's going out over YouTube.
And if we logged into Zoom or what did you? Echo?
If you log into Zoom, you can log into Zoom, but do it without audio. So if you want to do that.
So I can see if somebody waited there. Okay, well, I'll do that. But for now, will you all please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is now time for public comment. Did anyone submit a comment? Or would anyone in attendance like to speak?
The only attendee that we currently have is our screen. So since no one chose to come in person, except for that's all we've got.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Then let's move on to consent agenda, which consists of the agenda for tonight, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, the council minutes from April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, stormwater engineering tech title change and salary ordinance update number four, the March twenty twenty-two check register and financials, and we will excuse the absence of Councilmember Monica Boyle. Are there any items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda at this time?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You have a first and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and the motion is passed. There's no presentations tonight, and there is no public hearing, so we're going to go straight to action items. And the first one is the amendment of the two thousand twenty-two budget, and Mr. Crawford want to present on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Occasionally, we're required by state law to amend the budget when we have determined that there are changes, significant changes in the in the budget items compared to actual things we find out. After the we prepare the budget at the last quarter of the prior year and determine that we need to make some changes to the budget, and these changes we're bringing forward to you tonight for approval. Share my screen and bring up a presentation.
Who's doing that? I have a fix in mind for next time. I'll be able to show you guys this. Next time, I'll have the screen facing you guys connected with this. The screen facing the public connected to that. Just took me a minute to work it out.
Can everybody see that?
No.
No. And like Brian said, while we do this budget amendment for things of material changes, there are little changes that we added to this as well. So there's a little bit more than there normally is just because there's been a lot of little changes.
We can see it now.
Got it now?
Yeah.
Still?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So these are proposed budget amendments for the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two. There isn't a significant change in the ending balances. The what you'll see is that some of these numbers, the way we express our revenues and expenditures, revenues include the opening balance plus the current revenues for the year, and the ending balance includes the expenditures for the year plus the ending balance. So it's sort of deceiving the net change. It gets absorbed in some of the ending balances. And it's just the nature of how we present our revenues and expenditures for the year. That being said, here are the there overall, there's twelve fund budgets being amended. The total, so we're having a total decrease in the amount, the net amount of four hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-one. There's a decrease in revenue by fifteen thousand two sixty-three, and a decrease in expenditures by five hundred and seven thousand one hundred and eighty-four. Now, to go through each one by fund, this is our hotel motel tax, Fund One Thirty. We are seeing an overall revenue increase of sixteen thousand two hundred. We did find an error in entering the budget. Revenue received for was entered as eighteen hundred and should have been eighteen thousand. So that's on the plus side of our our ledger. So there was an error in the spreadsheet, and that has been corrected in this amendment. The next fund is our Street Improvement Fund, Three Eleven. There's a overall expense decrease of twenty-three thousand four sixty-three. And it's related to the the broadband project that was being funded by ARPA. And that's I don't have much more to add than just that in that case. The decreased grant revenue for the project by five percent of project budget.
I can add on that one, Brian, if you'd like. So it was in our budget that five percent of that overall cost would be funded through ARPA, but it was put into the budget as a hundred percent grant and not that five percent for ARPA. So in this fund, it's decreasing five by five percent in Fund Three Eleven, but the ARPA funds will take over that.
Thank you.
Overall, it's a wash, just fund balances.
The next one is the Equipment Reserve Fund, Three Twenty. We are seeing a overall increase expenses of eight thousand dollars. And this was due for capital spending approved in the capital facility plan, but not updated in the budget. So the expenditures increased by eight thousand dollars from thirty-seven thousand to forty-five thousand dollars.
And that was due to a vehicle.
Thank you. And then the revenue increased by eight thousand for transfer from current expense. So that's why we don't see a change in the the ending fund balances because we're drawing additional funds from the current expense to fund that eight thousand dollars. The next is the wastewater debt service fund, Four Twelve. And the overall expense decrease is three hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars. And that relates to an anticipated loan that wasn't needed and carried forward to two thousand twenty-two. That loan was paid off in the prior year, and we didn't pick that up when we were doing our budget. And so the overall expense decrease is two hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-nine. The loan closing in two thousand twenty-two for Southwest Sewer, first payment is due in two thousand twenty-three. The next is contract negotiations. Nineteen hundred and twenty-five dollars, the overall expense increase. That relates to the Public Works Union contract negotiations, and that's spread across multiple funds. So we it was small dollars through a number of different funds. So we just summed it up here to say that's what the the amount impacting in total. And that was because when we did the budget, by the time the budget was complete, the negotiations were still going on. And you can see the funds there. There's six funds involved with that expense increase. And overall, expense increase is thirty-two thousand five hundred. And that relates to the PD Task Force position that was added, including wages and benefits, a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred of expense. And then we're receiving PD Task Force grant revenue of eighty thousand dollars with offsets that hundred and twelve thousand additional expense, adding to the thirty-two thousand five hundred. And that is in the current expense fund. There's a few other various changes to various funds you can see in the first one relates to our current expense fund. There was donate donations budgeted low based on annualization. That's increasing our revenue by thirteen thousand. There is just a small increase in expense of two hundred dollars for budget increase due to the deputy city clerk. You can see in funds one twelve and zero zero fund, there's an overall expense increase at twenty-two hundred dollars related to ARPA and the Wi-Fi grant installation. We had our express bill paying web check budgeted amount was only for one service, not both. So that's been adjusted by that amount. And that affects a number of different funds due to how it's allocated out. The first one is our I. T. Fund, and the next is our utility funds, water, sewer waste or wastewater, stormwater. Zero impact on small tools budgeted in wrong line items. So the net effect was zero. So we moved the funds from twelve to zero zero one, just just a movement of between funds to account for that. And then there's some ARPA transfers, but that's moving the money that we received last year for ARPA, the one point three million dollars. Some of those projects that are occurring are occurring in different funds, but our funds were received in current expense. So we're having interfund transfers to move that ARPA ARPA revenue into the correct fund that has the expenditure. And you can see it affects four funds there. And that's all we have for the changes.
All right. What do council members for any questions or comments? And we'll begin with Councilmember Jessup. Councilmember Cleveland? Councilmember Peterson?
Brian, I don't remember going through this exercise in the past. Is there's some pretty small amounts like adjustments to salaries. I know that it's required. What's unique about this year?
No, we did a budget. We did a budget amendment last year in the second quarter of last year. We just decided to put everything in there that we had in the amendment. Okay. This year, some of the smaller ones, technically, I, you know, I don't think they're material, so you might not have to do them. But we were in the process of putting together the adjustments, so we thought we expressed it entirety.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Councilmember Williams?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Espinosa?
And a quick question. You said that there was an additional expensive eight thousand dollars for the purchase of a vehicle?
Correct. So it was approved in the capital facility plan plan at thirty-seven thousand dollars, but then when it went to council for approval to actually purchase the vehicle, it was approved at forty-five thousand dollars. So we still had it in our budget as the thirty-seven. So we just increased it by eight, which was approved by council.
Is this a utility truck or something? Or is that a what kind of vehicle is that?
Uh, yeah, I believe it's either for water or parks.
Thank you.
It's the parks pickup.
Yeah, and you know, with the volatility with pricing and inflation, definitely when we budget it and then go to purchase it, there can be variances. And we're probably going to see that more going forward with rampant inflation.
Councilmember Sherman?
No question. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussions at this time? Seen any? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance, number twenty-two dash zero zero six, amending the two thousand twenty-two budget.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Councilmember Williams, second.
Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, unanimous, the ayes have it, and the motion is passed. Thank you, Brian and Daeshree. Let's see, we're going to go more next to the commercial drive debt payment, and Ryan is still up for that.
Lisa, can you bring up the next?
Sure.
Next agenda item?
Maybe. There we go.
So we're constantly looking at our amount of debt load that we that we carry. And you know, with the projects coming up in the near future, potentially the Southwest Sewer and that, you know, all likelihood, we'll have to issue a bond on that. And with the number of projects we have with the Public Works Trust Fund this year, we have a number of debt items coming on the books. There are debt limits that were required to to meet as the city. Our like our general obligation debt is limited to two and a half percent of our assessed property value, of which one point five percent can be nonvoted debt. When we look at our total amount, we can have a limit of approximately twenty-two point seven million dollars in in debt, of which a total can be I think it's upwards to eleven million dollars in council manic debt that we don't have to go to the city for vote approval. We're significantly below below that amount currently. But one thing I wanted to, oh, can you click on the debt limits sheet? So just so I step back a bit, here's the detail of what we can have in our in our debt. And as I spoke, we have the nonvoted debt that can be one point five percent of our assessed value. We can go up to two and a half percent of debt if it's voted. So that relates to general obligation debt. So that's basically current expense stuff that we're going out and spending money. We do have other areas in which we can assume debt. But if any of it's related to any debt that we receive from any of the state agencies or federal agencies, that amount is not included in that general obligation debt. Although currently our debt is I believe it's about eight point one million, but we have a significant amount of debt coming online. Like I said, with potentially with the wastewater treatment plant, we're going to have debt coming online of about two point eight. That's more than that. It's about four and a half million dollars for the Southwest Sewer project. That's going to be coming in next year, although that amount does not go against our general obligation debt. We have to keep in mind that we do have a ten percent debt limit in total. And we really feel we have to leave ourselves some room if we need some general obligation debt room in order to finance a project. We don't have anything really planned. But keeping that in mind, we were thinking about or wanting to kind of reduce some of our debt levels, and we do have some we do have some excess funds available. We're quite liquid right now with approximately we have currently Daeshree, if you can remind me, I think we have about seven million dollars of cash in the bank on hand. We do have a couple of years ago, we were using Banner Bank, and we left Banner Bank, but some money is in that account, and there's enough money to pay off our our loan that we have at Banner Bank. And it's the two thousand and twelve general obligation bond for the Commercial Drive project. And that has two payments left totaling two hundred and sixty-one, seven forty-eight. And it's at four and a half percent interest. Most of the debt we're going to be incurring in the next year is significantly lower. The sum of it between half a percent to one percent. So that being in mind, we really like to recommend that we use some of those excess reserves we have, especially the money in Banner Bank to pay off that general obligation debt on the Commercial Drive project, the two hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And we're looking for your approval to go ahead and pay off that loan and reduce some of that some of that debt.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Let's go to council members. Were questions or comments, Mr. Jessup?
Thank you.
Mr. Cleveland?
No questions.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, what is our balance at Banner right now?
It's about three hundred and fifty thousand.
Four forty-five. I just logged in.
Oh, thank you.
Good to.
More than I thought.
Four hundred and forty-five thousand, a little over.
Okay.
And it's our intention to close the Banner account after that's paid off.
We do have some outstanding checks still that should not should not go through, but things happen, and sometimes they do. So that's one of the reasons we've also kept it open. At the end of this year, all of those will go to unclaimed property, though.
Thank you.
Espinosa?
Uh, yeah, Brian, would paying off that debt have an impact on any other city business at all?
Uh, not not with the level of reserves we're currently carrying in the current expense or in the bank account in general. There's about two and a half million dollars in ending fund balance currently at in the current expense fund, and that's that's over what we're current we currently expect for the end of the year for ending fund balance. So in my opinion, we're in really good shape.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I don't have any questions. I I'm glad that you're on top of this because I think this is absolutely a good idea.
Thank you.
And Sherman?
Um, I'm I'm I like this idea a lot, and I'm assuming with only you said only two other payments left, there wouldn't be a prepayment penalty at all.
No, there is not.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also eventually by closing the Banner Bank, we will also save on monthly fees we're incurring there. Although they're not large, but we will save some money.
Six dollars.
Yep.
All right. And and the rate is four point five percent. Is that what I read?
Yes.
Thank you.
So actually, the net payoff will probably be below that two sixty once once I get a buyout number. But that's currently what the ending balance, the current balance is.
Okay. All right. Is there any additional discussion? Mr. Peterson?
Well, I can figure out how my computer works here in a minute. I would like to authorize the Finance Director to pay off the final two payments of the Commercial Drive Go Geo Bond held at Banner Bank in the amount of two hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and no sense.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any additional discussion? Seen on, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, unanimous, the ayes have it, and the motion is passed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is the Council Chamber remodel A. V. Upgrade Contract Award, and Mr. Ricker will present on that in who's in your council chambers.
Thank you, Mayor. Last last month, we went out to bid on the Council Chamber project, and we got two two bidders, Nelson Construction and Casey Industries. We asked both of them to do a bid alternative on the project. The the design included renovation of the council chambers, the A. V. Upgrade, A. V. New new data drops into the offices of the building, and then as an alternate was for upgrading the HVAC system in the building. So when you look at the bid breakdown, Casey Industries actually with with the bid alternative is lower than Nelson Construction. However, we do not have the budget to include the HVAC part in this this phase of the of the remodel. So that then makes Nelson Construction the low bidder at six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and roughly just over that. We're asking council to to approve that with ten percent contingency plus sales tax. So that brings it just over eight hundred thousand dollars. They have eight months to complete the project once we actually enter into issue the notice to proceed. So tonight, we're asking council to authorize staff to issue a notice of intent to award to Nelson Construction Corporation in an amount not to exceed six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars roughly, plus ten percent of the agency and sales tax. Any questions?
Any questions, Councilmember Jessup? Mr. Peterson?
No questions.
Mr. Espinoza?
Yes, John, I have a question. So the the project. Is six seventy five for Nelson Construction plus six oh five for an HVAC system on top of that. For a total of one comma two million dollars?
That was what was bid. We're not proposing to do the bid alternate number one, which is that six hundred and five thousand. So the, so the total amount with a ten percent contingency and sales tax is eight oh seven.
Gotcha. Versus versus the other company, KC, what was their total amount for that bid?
Yeah, if you look at the bid, the the bid tabulation, their total amount was one point, one point. Two, five, six. And then, but but their base lump bid for just the council room renovation was was seven twenty five. Versus Nelson six seventy five, so they were over. So when when you break it down, Nelson is the low bidder.
Okay, I'm just trying to visualize that with the numbers. What what is presented on the screen versus what you're saying?
Well, what's being asked for approval is is eight oh seven, which is not on the screen right now. Eight oh seven is includes sales tax and a ten percent contingency.
Ms. Smith, do you have something?
I was just gonna hopefully clarify a little bit. Yeah, with the ten percent contingency in the tax, it's eight oh seven. For Nelson as opposed to Casey Industries would be eight hundred and sixty seven thousand with the ten percent contingency in the tax. So overall, for the base, which is what we're going for, is Casey Industries is more.
What was the budgeted number that you guys had in mind for a project of this nature?
Oh, I was gonna add on that part, so. When you go into the American Rescue Plan Act study that you all adopted last July. The number in there was about three hundred thousand, and then there was about another eighty for some IT improvements related to. Here, how we are making up the deficits and luckily, we put in the American Rescue Plan Act. Prioritization money and we were sitting on a cover expected deficiencies within community development. Luckily, those chickens didn't come home and roost, so that money is still there. So, so, so in that case, we have the five hundred. Thousand out of the community development bucket that's sitting there. And then we have the three hundred, however, some of the three hundred was taken out by some of the initial architecture. Studies for this, but in totality, we were able to shuffle money around within the IT budget. As well as our federal American Rescue Plan Act money to make this thing work. But we were only able to do the base bid because we were able to figure out the finance on the base, but there's no way. We're given to the alternate with the HVAC, so.
Gotcha. Yeah, because for some reason I had close to four hundred thousand in my mind, and so when I look at the eight hundred thousand. It looks significantly higher, so that is, that is a reason why I wanted to have a better understanding of. Of how that number came about and where we were pulling funds from.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're we're feeling the the pinch that everybody else is on construction costs. You know, being through the roof. You know, supplies, materials, everything is just up considerably.
Ms. Williams?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Sherman?
I don't know that I want to ask this. Is it if we do the HVAC as a standalone project, is it going to come in even higher? Than that, like, are these costs just because they were already going to be working on?
Well, the, the, I think what we'll do next year is budget for the HVAC and for the addition.
Yeah, I I was gonna add to the, the ideas that we could group the HVAC with. What we're gonna do with the jail cell renovation and so forth. I will say a key thing of why I'm glad we move forward with that Commercial Drive on repayment. Is we're going to do everything we can, try to get grants and stuff to do the jail renovation. However, I will be upfront, there are, there is now an extreme amount of money on the facility side relative to the. Infrastructure side, so there we very well may need to be, we very well could be put in a situation where a portion of the. May need to be some council manic debt to do the stuff back here, so we have space, but. We're going to try to get the grants that we can get, I just want to put that out there, that that's going to have to be a consideration as we grapple with that. Because I've been running the inflation numbers on the BLS inflation calculator for various projects. And it's frightening over the last year.
All right, are there any other questions or comments or discussions from council? Or from staff? All right, seen on, do we have a motion?
Corporation to enter into contract in the amount not to exceed six hundred and seventy five thousand thirty eight dollars.
Is there a second?
One second.
All right, any additional discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? All right, the ayes have it and the motion is passed, thank you, John. Oh, you're still up? All right, he's going to talk about the historic cemetery grant for the core farm monument site.
So last year, we did a GPR survey and of the cemetery. And we were able to locate roughly a hundred and eighteen of the graves. There are, according to county records, over seven hundred people buried there. Wall Wall twenty twenty had done some research a few years back and they commissioned that sign that's in the park right now. That's up on the screen and it does list the the research that they did and of the people that are buried there. However, it's a, it's, you know, it's not something you. It's not a very significant sign in that it's, it won't, doesn't have a lasting presence, it it won't stand the test of time. And so we applied for a grant last year in the fall to install a. A large granite monument style, that's the style of sign that would have all the known. People that were buried in that cemetery engraved on that with their names. It'd roughly be a hundred and twenty by ninety six inches by six inches thick, so pretty substantial. Monument sign and marker. So we we were successful, it's a full grant of twenty eight thousand dollars, that's what it was. The estimates came in at, of course, those from last fall, hopefully, we'll be able to keep it at that. The the granite that we were. That was spec, I think it, I think it comes from Vermont, so. At any rate, it's going to be a really nice addition to that that cemetery and memorialize the people that were buried there. So we're asking council to authorize staff to sign a grant agreement with. With the state.
All right. Mr. Jessup, questions or comments? Mr. Cleveland? Mr. Peterson?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Espinoza?
No questions.
Ms. Williams?
No questions.
And Sherman? All right, there's no additional discussion, do we have a motion?
I would like to move to authorize city staff to sign grant agreement number FY twenty two. Dash zero 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 nine, is that correct? The grant agreement number as shown in the notes, in the amount of. Two hundred and, or sorry, twenty eight thousand dollars.
Second. All right, any additional discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? All right, unanimous, the ayes have it and the motion is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is resolution supporting an application for pedestrian and bicycle grant. For Myra Road and Garrison Village Way and Fort Walla Walla Park Intersection Reconstruction. There's a tell will present on that.
Hey, thank you. So this, great, so this resolution of support for a grant is very similar to the other ones. You all passed the last meeting, except for a different corridoring, isn't exactly fully in their jurisdiction. So it's an intersection of Myra Road, Garrison Village Way and Fort Walla Walla Park. My counterpart, Nabil Shala, I see manager over in Walla, we've been talking about this. Because over the years, both of us have received a number of complaints as residents from villages of Garrison Creek cross. My brother to get to Fort Walla Walla Park, actually, if you, if you look on the Strava app, the tracks like pedestrians and. Bicycle, there's a number of people go both ways across, but yeah, so it's going to be very dangerous, especially with the traffic volumes. My road is right now is over twelve thousand vehicles a day at the intersection. So this grant was essentially program money to refashion the other intersection. Likely into one either with with a stoplight or a traffic circle, likely a stoplight. Looking at the traffic volumes, they'll help with safety crossing the street. Additionally, it'll open up some land for us because the issue we currently have. Is that vacant commercial land up on the northwest quadrant of that intersection. If we were to have developer come in today and say, hey, I want to pull Walgreens in there or something. City of Walla could comment back and say, well, hey, that's going to trigger all this traffic and you're going to pay for a traffic. Like now in the perfect world, all of the homes that were built at villages of Garrison Creek where they've had equally pay for that. However, at the time, no one made a comment as to that, so we're in this like awkward situation. Where until really that intersection gets dealt with, I'll tell you right now, commercial development really won't happen on that property. Because they know they would get hit with that total amount, so this grant, if it gets awarded. Will essentially get that intersection dealt with, you know, get that property where it can be marketed the correct way and. Send on its way and then also, I mean, again, looking at Strava and Blue Mountain Regional Trails Plan. People are using as a multimodal cross, and even though it is not controlled four ways. So I will leave that there, will be a first to pass this. I know Mr. Shawa will be pushing this on his end as well, because the due date is within a month.
All right, we'll go for questions, Mr. Jessup?
This is fantastic, thank you, and I heard you correctly, you're going to use the grant money with the intent to put the intersection. To the extent assuming and knowing that more traffic's coming and and commercial and all that kind of stuff. So the grant is intended to go towards updating and assuming more is coming.
It is, and we're, both of us are trying to get ahead of the curve on this. Because eventually, the Washington State Department of Transportation wants to move the designation of Highway one twenty five. From Ninth Street to Myra Road, and I'll tell you right now, once that happens, if we don't have our improvements done by that time, all bets are off. It tends to be a logistical nightmare to give improvements on a state highway, so we need to get out of this now before they shift that designation.
Yeah, thank you so much for getting ahead of it, I appreciate it.
Mr. Cleveland?
No questions, but thank you for your tireless pursuit of money and the forward thinking to, you know, create. More developable, developable areas in college place.
Mr. Peterson?
So Mike, is that property that's south? Of Home Depot, is that project on hold or did I miss something?
That that's a completely separate parcel from this parcel. So the parcel you're referencing is basically on the southwest corner of Woodman Drive in Myra. Which is just a little bit north of this. And and we're working, we're working through things with them, they're just doing market studies and other things. I wouldn't say it's a completely dormant project, though, what I will say is what this commercial property is like showcased up on the. Map right now. I can say with confidence that that's a dormant one until we get that intersection controlled.
Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Espinoza?
Just a comment, I think this is great for various recent safety and looking into the future for our infrastructure. And to invite more vendors and stores to come, so very appreciative of the work here, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Sherman?
No questions, I think this is great.
Mike, I have a quick question. Where's Qs and Rs of Walla Wallas' now? Where does that put us?
We can still, we can still submit that grant application, I mean, we we would have to come up like with any matchmies. If they didn't give us the whole amount or whatever, but there is a shared use doctrine concept. Where I believe we could still do.
Still work with it.
Yeah, yeah, I have no intention of believe that would happen, though my discussions have been very equal on this issue. Because they had, they have the same problem, I mean, one of their most utilized parks is across the road, so.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, is there a motion?
Councilmember Espinoza, I move to approve resolution number twenty two dash zero four one, which authorizes city council support of a grant application. Into the Washington State Department of Transportation Pedestrian and Bicycle Grant Program to fund reconstruction of the Myra Road Garrison Village Way. Slash Fort Walla Walla Park Intersection.
Second, Peterson?
Okay, first and second, any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, the ayes have it and the motion is passed. All right, my next item is the interlocal agreement with Pacific Little League leagues of Lions Park Fields.
Hey, thank you. This item has been many years in the making, so Pacific Low League. They utilize the softball field at Lions Park for practice play for their leagues. However, over the years, they, we did not have a formal interlocal agreement with them at all, which is very problematic. For a number of reasons, operations, maintenance, scheduling, getting grants, I mean. The youth athletic grant we received for me, they're a lot more difficult, we inhabit her local. Still got it, but it was a major challenge, so with this agreement in place. What they'll do is essentially sets them as second priority behind the school, the district for scheduling of the outside. And then it also allows us to say, like, when they can't use the site, like, for instance. Later this year, hopefully in the next spring and summer, we're going to be doing the massive renovation project. So that's the given when you have bulldozers, you can't really have softball games in the middle of that, baseball games. But and then also, I would think of some ownership into it as well, because I was trying to encourage abouters to. But, and then also, I would think give some ownership into it as well, because I was trying to encourage abouters to help. Maintain they are now, is, is a critical of an issue with the field we have out there, but. With that grant, we're receiving from the Recreation Conservation Office at Youth Athletic Facility Fund. Then the result's gonna be a very nice multi-use field with a backstop and folks are using, I mean, we maintain it the best we can, but. Volunteers and others should help in that regard as well, I said, the city of Colfax, the whole volunteer group behind McDonald Park, they took a lot of ownership over the fields out there, so. It's trying to encourage the same behavior, but it's just a general operational agreement within ten year increments and. It's good they have something, because through the last decades, we've had nothing formally, so. And this is past the muster of Park Harbor Recreation Board, they recommended approval of this at their meeting last week, so.
All right, all right, thank you, okay, Mr. Jessup, questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Mr. Cleveland?
No question.
Mr. Peterson?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Espinoza?
Um, I think this is great, looking at the obligations of the Little League, and I think it's wonderful to have stakeholders. Be part of the upkeep of the field so that they can have a sense of accountability and just pride and, and maintaining grounds. Looking nice and keeping our facilities in top shape, so I think this is a great idea and a move in the right direction.
Ms. Williams?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Sherman?
No question.
Right, is there any additional discussion? All right, do we have a motion on this resolution?
I'm making a motion to adopt resolution number twenty two dash zero four two, which authorizes the city administrator to sign the interlocal agreement with Pacific Little League.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second, any additional discussion? All right, let's vote then, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, the ayes have it and the motion is passed. All right, that's all the action items, we have a few, I mean, there's no administrative reports tonight. But we do have a few informational reports in your packet to review and your own time, or at a later time. We have no executive session tonight, so is there any other business we're good of the order?
Nice to see you all again.
Welcome, Mr. Jessup, to his first meeting in council chambers.
Chamber, I see.
All right, so there's no, oh, actually, is there a motion? The meeting.
Okay, Councilmember Williams, I move we adjourn.
Would, no, please, okay, let's stop, that's right.
Stop.
We no longer motion to adjourn, so if there's no objection, we will motion to conclude, please.
Yeah, conclude.
All right, I move we conclude.
How about you be the second?
I'm sorry, did somebody already do that and I didn't hear them?
Somebody's gonna have to explain that to me later, okay, thank you. But the motion to, not adjourn.
Let's just go.
Conclude the meeting. Yep.
I guess I didn't speak up enough.
We have to change in words, okay, so we have a motion and we have a second, so if there's no objection, the meeting is concluded at seven fifty eight P M. Thanks, everybody, have a good night.
I'll just make a quick clarification, there was new legislation passed that requires some additional. Notice postings of an adjournment of a meeting. That's legally. Using a different terminology, a different meaning of that terminology, but just to. Make sure we're clear that we are ending the meeting, we're not moving it to a different time and place. We're gonna start using the terminology of concluding the meeting. Rather than adjourning so that we don't have any additional posting requirements at the end of our meetings.
Is there, are there motions for that, Lisa, or just the statement?
Pardon?
Is there a motion for that, or is it just a statement of conclusion?
No, to conclude the meeting, it's still the same, same action, just different language.
Got it.
And Lisa forgot to put the post-it note on my forehead.
Mine too. What if it happens if I motion to end the meeting?
You can end the meeting, that works too, end or conclude either way is perfectly fine.
Thank you, Lisa.
Lieutenant Ben Phil, thank you so much for being here and giving us your time.
Thanks for keeping us legal, Lisa.